...meeting of the Acton Board of Selectmen to Order. The town of Acton, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Acton Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. The town hall is closed to the public. This meeting will be broadcast wide local access cable on the Acton TV channel or streaming online in Acton TV YouTube live channel, and audio will be broadcast live on the radio on WPM 94.9. To participate remotely from a computer, please click on the link below to join the public meeting. That's webinar https://zoom.us/j/503918785, or from a telephone dial 646-876-9923, that is webinar IB 503918785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. We have one item on today's agenda, and that's to discuss and vote on the board's statement addressing racism in Acton. For citizens' participation, I will take public comments on the Acton Policy Against Racism Statement dated November 8, 2020. During the board's discussion, there will be no public comment, and I would ask David to close the chat feature during our discussion. So, David, are there any public comments?
There is one person with their hand raised.
Sure.
Leo Fatchman, please go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hello, I'm Leo Fatchman from Wright Terrace in West Acton. I was inspired to speak tonight or today based on a presentation from Marty Benson for the November 5 Acton Boxboro Regional School Community Meeting. I strongly recommend listening to his presentation about the Acton Boxboro mascot return issues that starts at about the two-minute mark. Let me start by saying that this is, this will be my opinion, so please do not trust my family, friends, or acquaintances. If you have issues with what I say, please contact me, and we can discuss the issues. Maybe I'll learn something, maybe you'll learn something, and at least we'll have a better understanding of each other. I believe that we should commit to eradicating racism. I agree that we need to listen and understand. Where I differ is that we need to listen to all voices in town. We're a diverse town, and we all have our own experiences when it comes to prejudices and bigotry. If systematic racism is a reference to systems in place that create and maintain racial inequality in nearly every facet of life for people of color, I don't agree. But I'm willing to listen to evidence, and if identified, I would be willing to help change that system. I do not agree with the broad-brush statement about white privilege. Isn't that statement in itself racist, where racism is defined as prejudice, discrimination, or antagonism direct against people based on their membership in a particular racial group? Can you make the change from "I give white people," to "I give some white people"? There are many privileges that a person can have or not have in addition to white privilege, which include, in no particular order, wealth, health, athletic ability, intelligence, work ethic, geographic location, gender, and many more. All privileges taken together make the individual. Most important privilege that I possess is a loving and supportive wife. I am not a racist, prejudiced, or bigoted, and I'll stand with anyone against people who are. Before someone comments that I don't know what it's like growing up as a non-white, I'll agree with you. But you do not know what it was like growing up as Leo Fatchman. I grew up in an upper poor or very low middle-class household. Neither of my parents graduated high school and had very low-paying jobs. I've been called white trash. I know what it's like to go to bed hungry. I started working while babysitting at the age of 12, and had many jobs after that, until I moved out, half of my pay went to my parents' friend's rent. They thought I should get a job after high school, and they told me about a job in a bulk mailing company because college is only for rich people. Initially, I'd only finished two and a half years because I couldn't keep my grades up while working full-time. Finally, with the help and support of a wonderful wife, I finished college. My story goes on, and at no time do I feel white privilege got me where I am today. Let me close with saying communication is very important. I hope Marty's presentation and my statements might inspire others to join the discussions. I'm not directing this at people that agree with me. This is only at people that agree with me. This issue is very important. We need all opinions discussed in a loving and respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fatchman. David, are there any other... There are two more hands up. One second.
Sure.
Mike Rothbaum, please go ahead.
Thanks, David. You hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
So, again, Rabbi Mike Rothbaum, Rabbi Congregation Beth Elohim, our prospect. I live on 22 Tuttle. Very grateful for the statement that you all put together, and particularly grateful to Dean really sensed how much you heard from the community in between the previous two meetings. And it takes a big man to grow, and to hear, and to process, and to change where you're at, and it was really inspiring to me to just to witness that that change in you. So, thank you for being a model for all of us.
Janet Adachi, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you. Janet Adachi, Simon Happden Lane. I have already sent an email to you, just sort of laying out the basics of my comments. As I said, I was really reluctant to get involved in this discussion, in part because, well, I've been dealing with these issues all my life. I'm neither white nor black nor brown. I'm one of those people, the model minority, called an Asian, and I've still nonetheless had to deal with black all of my life, learned to deal with it, learned to pick my fights, and am surprisingly thick-skinned as a result of it. But I do find that sometimes some of my white friends are even more indignant at some of the comments that I've gotten than I am because I've been living with it all my life. And I know from some of my best friends from college who are non-white, African-American, Latino, we have a real maillage. We look like the old 1970s Coca-Cola commercial, you know, all the world, everybody different colors standing together. Anyhow, I know that we all have a similar perspective on sort of discussions of race and racism and who gets involved in them. The one thing I'm really urging you to do, encouraging you to do, is to not rush to adopt the latest draft statement. I understand that you feel some pressure to do this. If you are going to make just a statement, that's one thing. I'll leave it to you to do whatever you think is appropriate, but the latest draft looks like a policy, and for a policy, I really strongly encourage you to take more time and focus on, with the understanding that you're not dropping the topic, but it is a very difficult topic. It requires a lot of sensitivity. As Leo Fatchman said, there are very different perspectives in town that I am not sure are being included in this discussion. I am aware of what the discussion is on the Facebook page. There's a lot of demonization of members of the Board of Selectmen, some of them. And what concerns me generally is that, from one side or the other, there is a certain rigidity of thinking and closed-mindedness, and that is not going to get us, make us make progress. I was involved a few years ago in a community organization called the Diversity Coalition, which was started by just people who wanted to just talk about race relations, ethnic divisions, and all the rest of it. We met at Beth Elohim. We were almost all white, except for two blacks and me, so not very diverse. All on the same page, however, but one of the limitations was that we weren't really able to bring in a lot of the community, including non-whites, for a more robust discussion. But we tried. The longtime resident of Acton, George Smith, has since moved to Jamaica Plain, which probably is a more diverse community, more to his liking, but he is a wonderful person who provided a lot of valuable perspective. The other person, longtime resident of Boxboro, Rowan Gibson, I think he's still around. He was a guest speaker at one of the Martin Luther King breakfasts recently, might have been last year. But these are people whose long-term perspective, I think, is really important. And then there are the perspectives of people like Leo, who I have, he is not the first one I've heard say, "I don't, I hear about white privilege, but let me tell you, it was, you know, pretty dicey. I did not feel particularly privileged. I've heard that, I understand where that's coming from." And I think that that, those voices also have to be heard. So, for that reason, I would just say, give the rest, and then if you're not going to, I think, limited to being a statement, okay? Whatever you want it to be, that's fine, but I, my concern is that if you develop a policy, rush into adopting a policy, it is going to have consequences for the entire town, and it may not accomplish what you were hoping to do, okay? That's, and those are my comments. I think it's good that you've initiated this conversation, but if you really want it to be productive, it's touchy, it's complicated. I know, I've spent a lifetime having conversations like this with people, including my close friends, who all are non-white, okay? So, just, just please, take your time. Make it good, okay? Don't rush, you know, what, it's not going to change anything in the short term, if you, whether you have a policy in place or not. But it will make a big difference in the long term if you rush to adopt a policy that you need to change right away because it has some unintended consequences, or it offends people, which I can say might happen. And you really don't want to increase whatever divisions there are out there with a policy. I know you have good intentions, you want to do the best for the community, and my suggestion really is just give it more time to develop. So, and let, and let the DEIC continue to have its discussions. That's something else I'd like to add. I actually sat in, because I'm a strange person. I sat in and listened to the committee talk about, develop their mission statement and their, their other, the other statement, and I was really positively impressed by the caliber of the discussion. I mean, there were some very thoughtful comments. It was, you know, it wasn't just sort of broad-brush sloppy thinking. It was very thoughtful, and it took a couple of hours, if I recall, but that is not easy wordsmithing in a public meeting when there's a potential for a lot of different opinions. So, I would say, I'm looking forward to hearing or seeing what else the DEIC does once it, now that it's passed, developing these basic guidelines. So, anyhow, but kudos for creating that committee and getting it started, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. David, is there anyone else?
Yeah, a few more now.
Sure.
Charlie Cadlec, please go ahead. Charlie, I'm going to unmute you, see if that works. No, I don't seem to be able to unmute you. Perhaps you're having a problem with your microphone. I will, I will come back to you. Call user one.
Yes, it's Tara. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, so Tara from West Acton. So, first of all, I'd like to just make the statement that the idea of recognizing white privilege isn't to suggest that your life wasn't hard, or isn't hard. But it's not as hard if your skin color is the non-dominant skin color, or in a, in a, in a range of shades where perhaps Asian folks don't get as much, or as condescending, or the type of exclusive, exclusive, the negative exclusive effects of somebody who has black skin or darker skin. I was very excited to see the, that you've come, at least it looks like, you know, some folks have come to some consensus with this new proposed draft. But I fear the folks that have spoken against this, and I looked at it, and I thought to myself, gosh, you know, this isn't very strong. In fact, it's completely timeless, but it seemed to be of a genuine caring, listening and caring, and I can't see anything that's wrong with listening and caring. Even if it's a policy that we should listen and care, what is wrong with such a policy? A rush, a fear, oh no, things will change, and I may not have my same privilege that I have now, if everybody's equal. Well, you know, A, what is wrong with that? And B, I see nothing wrong with this statement. I see it as, you know, it could be much, much stronger. I preferred the one that David had written before, proposed before, and I think waiting is a bad sign. It's not, it's not an indicator of a desire to be inclusive. Yes, the DEIC, yes, it's great that the DEIC was created, but it was created to look at a problem. For the statement that's being proposed, I think that it's the recognition that there's a problem, a problem of understanding and a problem of caring, and to at least make it clear that Acton does care and Acton does listen, and so I hope you approve this. I recognize that it could be stronger, and I recognize that it could be watered down to accommodate people who are afraid of, you know, making strong statements about inclusivity. But I fear that we, we can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good. Can I go ahead?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, well, I bring a slightly different perspective to this. I think a lot of people in Acton do not know anything about this particular proposal, and when they find out, they're not going to necessarily be happy with it. There's already resentment that I know about, about the mascot situation. The way I read this draft, it's not about Acton. It's the same wording that's nationally on endless number of websites, white privilege, systemic racism. The one I find, I guess it would be amusing if it wasn't a serious matter, this unconscious bias. I don't know who comes up with these things, but they diminish the value of what we, I think, all are for, which is to eliminate racism. And you've heard me before saying that identifying people by their skin color, even though it may be for a good purpose, is the wrong way to go. You perpetuate racism, and this is more of the same. You know, of all the documents, charter, bylaws, charters for the forty-some boards and committees in Acton, there isn't a single reference to race, ethnicity, or color, except for one, the DEIC. David knows that I thought the provision of having seventy percent blacks or immigrants is just totally wrong, and I will continue to say that. I think this particular draft, if it's adopted, or anything similar adopted by the selectmen, the selectmen represent the town of Acton. Town of Acton is my home. My kids were born here. I've been here for more than fifteen years. I will be buried in Acton. I am protective of Acton, and I think this will, this particular document will do it harm. You can do better. I think eliminate all these hot-button words, focus on what we can do positively with people who need help, not just because of their skin color, but for any number of reasons, and recognize that there is a cost to this policy, not just monetary. I mean, you know, the hundred thousand dollars plus that we spent on the incident in Marion, the two hundred-plus thousand that the schools are spending on the mascot issue, according to J D Ed, the staff time that's devoted to this, these are real costs. There are many people in Acton that haven't had a paycheck in six months. This is not the time to add cost to the town budget. Think about that. I think we're a long ways from coming up with a document which serves the purpose that you all want, and I do too. This is not it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there anyone else?
There is one more. Corey Salo, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Dr. Corey Salo, and I was not intending to speak because we're having work done on our house, so if it gets too loud, just wave your hands, and I will cut it short. But I am just very moved to speak after hearing some people's reactions, but I will keep it short. I want to amplify what Tara said, I want to amplify what Rabbi Rothbaum said, and I just want to, I guess, react to some of the other things I've heard. This may sound a little disjointed, but to keep it short, I'm just going to jump around a bit. One, I just want to acknowledge that I agree the DEIC is doing amazing work, and I was not surprised that they weren't sloppy. I heard it said that someone was, you know, appreciated their work wasn't sloppy, and was sort of surprised how hard they worked. I might have misunderstood that, but I am not surprised at all, and I think it's really important to not be surprised when people of color are doing remarkable work. That's not surprising at all. They're very intelligent, smart, hard-working people, just like the rest of us. I also heard, and it's not uncommon to hear, that people who have really suffered, who happen to be white, you know, have a hard time swallowing that white privilege pill, and I get that it can be hard to feel like your struggles are invalidated. So, just want to say, you know, if people have suffered economically, have a disability, have a mental health condition, there's so many ways that people struggle in this world, and I want to use what's referred to as both-and thinking. That can be true. They can really, really suffer, and they can have certain privileges due to their race, their whiteness alone. I have never had to worry that I was being judged because of my race. I'm white. I've never had to worry that I'm going to be a minority in a room. There are so many ways that I have not had to worry or second-guess anything because of my whiteness, and that is all white privilege means. And lastly, I heard it say that it's wrong to identify people by skin color, even if it's for a good reason, and I, I am feeling a pull to do a bit of a history lesson here, but I'm not going to do that because everyone in this town can read books. But I just really want to remind everyone that race was socially constructed in order to create an argument for slavery. There was no such thing as race before slavery. You can, you know, Ebron Kendi goes over this really well in his book, How to Be an Anti-Racist. The only reason people were labeled as black was to create a case for them as a, you know, inaccurately as a less-than person in order to sell them into slavery. So, identifying people by skin color has that history to it, so it's, it's not that it's done for a good reason. But here we are, and so now we can't ignore race. We are all different, and society and systemic racism treats us differently because of that historic nature of how racism developed. So, that's all. I just, again, well, let me just say one last sentence, is that I just want to, because I hear I'm the last speaker, I just want to frame and simplify that all you guys are doing today, you are doing great work, and you're, all you're doing is putting some words out there that say racism is bad, we want to do better. So, I know people are saying, like, people in the town are going to be upset by this. It will be okay. You are just making, putting some words together saying racism is bad, and I think you got to move forward, and I promise it will be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salo. David, is there anyone else?
There's one other person with their hand up. Please go ahead and state your name and street. You have to unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello.
Yes. Was this?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please. You are? So, your line is cutting out a lot. I'll give you just another minute here, so it's a little difficult to hear you. That person disconnected, John.
Okay, if maybe we could hear...
And there's no other people, there's no other people with their hands.
Okay, okay, so let's begin the discussion or of our meeting, and David, if you would lead and open the conversation.
Sure. I want to thank everybody on the board for working through this. I know we've been working on this for quite a few weeks now. You know, I think we've made a great progress. I think, as the other members have seen in emails, the vast majority of recent comments have been in favor of the recent draft policy. I know that, you know, a couple of people have said that they wanted a statement with more specific actions. Personally, I prefer leaving the more specific actions until after recommendations from the DEIC. And the goals in this draft policy, I believe, were several. One is to take real steps, not just kick the can down the road. Second is to sensitize and inform residents about systemic racism and implicit bias, and what we can do to start to address it. And finally, to adopt anti-racist policies to set an example for the, for the town of Acton. So, so that, that's my thing. I will say one other thing, if members of the board are interested. I know that in a few of the statements have talked about an us-versus-them orientation in some of the items in the listening section. I have a very slightly revised draft that reduces some of that. I'm open to either way, whether the board wants to just go with the existing version two draft, which is in the packet, or I can show you the version three draft, which just has a few words changed to address that, so whatever people want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jim?
Well, I don't have a grand summary, but I, I'm just pleased that we're here and working on this. And my understanding of this, of this draft is that it's, it's a, it's a starting place, as David was saying. It's a, it's a place to say, yeah, we understand there's, there's issues here, we understand parts about it, and we're looking forward to the work of the DEIC to, to, you know, create more specific policies. I'm also, I was also noticed the, some of the language issues in the listening and understanding section, which I would, I'd summarize my main issue as that the listening and understanding section reads currently as if it's written, as if it's addressed to... uh, currently as if it's written, as if it's addressed to white people. Um, but it's not really an appropriate message, in fact, for um, people that might be the subject of active discrimination to say, oh, you know, be quiet. Be quiet when you're uncomfortable. That's obviously not what we want to say. Um, so uh, I, I-
May, may I make it just a, a point quickly there?
Sure.
It, it says that uh, the listeners are supposed to be quiet.
Um, yeah.
Uh, so not, not, not the people relating their stories.
Yeah, but sometimes the listeners, the, the listeners are described as, you know, all, everyone in Acton. So sometimes the listeners will be people of color as well. Um, so I, I had also, I, I, I'll bet you David that your edits will be, will resolve my issues with this. But if not, there's, there's also a way of just adding um, a s- a small introductory sentence right before the listening and understanding to clarify that this is meant for that this particular sections are especially addressed to white people. But I'm, I'm, I, I like you, I'm open either way. I just have some suggestion. I just have that one suggestion.
Uh, Joan?
Well, before we get to listening and understanding, it says, we encourage all residents to join us in committing to. So I think that, I don't know what David's edits are, but I think, or it says, we encourage all residents. There's an important piece there. And I know this is a policy, so we can't have action in it. Such as having um, an open meeting.
I'm sorry, David, do you want to comment on?
So um, uh, what, uh, what kind of, I, I'm just confused as to what kind of open meeting? Are, are, are you suggesting that the policy say that there should be other meetings?
Well, it says the policy should be re- reviewed at least annually, which I approve of. But if we don't have any action on this.
Well, I, I, I see. So if, if I can, I can comment on that. Th- this is mo- modeled specifically after our um, sustainability, sys- sys- sustainability policy. And it's also similar to other policies that the board has, that those policies do not have specific actions. But basically, they guide future actions. And, and that's, and that's what this is for. Um, and um, as I said in, in my, in my short statement, um, I think uh, th- that as far as uh, taking specific actions, I would like to wait and to see the recommendations of the DEIC. Um, but uh, that, that's, that's, that's my opinion. And it, and I, ag- again, the purpose from my, my point of view for this, thi- this policy was really to, you know, to sensitize and inform people and use us as an example. Which I think is, is exactly what we do in the case of sustainability, right? Sustainability, right? It's the, let, let people know that there's an issue, let people know that we're concerned about it. And let people know that we're gonna pay attention to this issue going forward.
Is that satisfactory, Joan?
Yeah.
Uh, further comments, Joan?
No.
Uh, Dean?
Yeah, I, I think that what we've got on balance is a, a really good statement. Um, I think the nice thing about it is that some of us are a little uncomfortable because it goes one way and some of us are uncomfortable because it goes another way. Um, and I think, you know, it, this is a really long conversation that everybody in the country is gonna have to have. I mean, we're dealing with four hundred years of history here. You know, gee, we've been at this for two months. So it's, it's gonna take a while. Um, I think it's a good starting point. Uh, certainly, I'm very pleased that it uh, it's specific that we are going to review this from time to time. I certainly endorse David's comment about waiting on a lot of specific actions until we hear what DEIC comes up with um, for their recommendations. And that was the point of a lot of my comments earlier on in this conversation is, you know, why form a committee? And then immediately take all of their things away from them and say, oh, no, we'll do it ourselves. So I think it's important that we, that we learn from the DEIC and give them a chance to do their work. Um, the other thing, as far as policy issues, that's important, whether we're talking about racism or if we're talking about sustainability, folks have to realize that there's a lot on the, the town's plate. There's a lot of budgetary issues we're going to have to deal with. There's gotta be balance of all of these interests. Um, we can't accomplish everything that's in the sustainability policy. We can't, you know, just march in that one direction. We're probably not gonna be able to, as, to deal with every single issue that comes up from the DEIC. Um, there has to be kind of a buffet that we choose from as, and some of those decisions are made by, certainly guided by the town manager. And then the selectmen are certainly gonna have to take their action and decide, you know, is policy A dealing with sustainability, is that a more important policy than policy B dealing with racism? And we'll have to come up with some sorts of compromises. Just as we've noted here on the board, we've got, I'd say two real conservatives and two real liberals and one guy in the middle trying to balance the boat. Um, and we're gonna have to continue to do that. So I'm comfortable with the policy the way it is. I'd be interested to see David's uh, edits. Um, you know, if we're dealing totally in a vacuum, I'd say, okay, let's, you know, work on this for another two or three months or whatever. But I think it's time to just get this done, move on, uh, let DEIC work. Um, and have some conversations. I was certainly moved by what Charlie Cadlec had to say. Um, I agree with him in many of his points. I agree with Leo Fatchman. Um, but I think, you know, we should use this policy as a way to uh, sort of encourage the conversation. So I'm uh, I'm happy with what we've got.
Thank you, Dean. Um, um, I will vote for the statement uh, subject to the um, uh, little uh, revisions that we were uh, discussing. I had one for you, uh, David, um, from, it was from Ann Chang. In the uh, uh, first sentence of the second paragraph, where it goes healthcare, at the end of the sentence, uh, healthcare, housing, political power, et cetera. If we might strike et cetera and insert an equal opportunities. That would make sense.
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to thank um, you know, my, my, my four colleagues for their work over the last month. I mean, it's, it's been difficult, you know, it's not been easy. We've all made contributions in terms of the process and the substance of the documents. Um, I enjoyed very much working with Jim Snyder Grant on the draft that um, that, that we combined on. And I particularly liked his initiative in trying to, in a separate draft, tie everything together. And I'd like to thank, you know, the many citizen comments, um, you know, that uh, that we received. Initially, many of them were quite critical. Um, upon receipt of the latest draft, I was very pleased um, how um, supportive and kind and appreciative um, the writers were towards us. And, you know, that bodes very well. Um, the discussion of race is a very complex and sensitive topic. And um, uh, and I'm echoing perhaps some of the sentiments of Charlie and Leo. And, and my struggle was, how do you define racism? And, and, and the word racist um, in a way that combines the past, you know, and the present. That was something I really had to think about and work on and, and come to an acceptance of the statement. Um, but we have to move forward, you know, as a community. This is just a start. Um, and um, the, the, the key for me in this is that we have to have a discussion that's fair and it's rational and it's open to all sides. And it can't be a discussion of I'm right, you're wrong, and you're a racist. Because that's not gonna get us where we need to go. It's only gonna prove very um, very um, you know, divisive. And um, going a little bit beyond Acton, you know, we have a second reckoning as a nation to deal with. And that's what the modern economy has done in terms of trade deals and automation. And what it's done to the middle of the country in creating a, a huge, huge um, economic disparity. And as a country, you know, we're not gonna have peace until those issues are addressed. And I would, you know, commend to people who've not thought about the issue of the book Hillbilly Elergy by J D Vance and the book The Forgotten by Ben Bradley Jr. Those are very powerful books. So we have, you know, multiple reckonings as a town and as a larger country um, to deal with. And, and just to the larger community, um, we're gonna have a very tough winter ahead of us. Uh, the weather, after some, you know, a great ten days, is gonna start turning colder and seasonal. Our COVID rate cases have spiked up from two, three and four active cases to approximately twenty-six the other day. We're gonna have to be mindful of each other and particularly watchful, you know, of our seniors. And to point out, uh, echo some of Dean's comments, as a select board, we have a lot of work to do. We've put off um, town meeting for several reasons, including the ability to hold it safely until likely sometime in June, when we can have a like hybrid town meeting. And there's, there's critical budget issues that we're gonna have to deal with to keep us going. Um, as well as projects we're, we're working on and want to go forward on because there will be a, a life after COVID. So um, uh, thank you all. And I, and I want, uh, David, if you want to put up the, um, your revised um, 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 draft of the, of the, of the policy statement.
So the um, areas that are changed are only, it's just between, within the highlights. So I added a, an equal opportunity uh, to replace the et cetera. Um, and um, the listening section is just tweaked. And so the listening refers then is, is talking to all residents as in, as uh, from the previous sentence. And the, the, the uh, pos- possessive pronouns uh, like there in these now uh, are pretty clearly now refer to the black indigenous and people of color from the first bullet. So I mean, I can, I can read it out loud. It says, the board encourages all residents to join us in committing to listening to voices of black indigenous and other people of color that inform the rest of us of the injustices they have long endured. And listening by remaining quiet during moments of discomfort, discomfort when their stories challenged entrenched ideas and assumptions. And that's the extent of the, the, the changes. The rest of the document is exactly the same.
Okay. Um, are there any further comments from board members? Uh, David, uh, has the, uh, Jim?
Um, just that, that, I think these are fine edits. I don't want to go into my, the edits I was thinking of because I think they're larger and would be more complicated to change. Um, we might want, in the, in the first sentence of, of the understanding section, um, if I'm remembering my grammar right, we might want to say uh, the United States instead of in the United States. Uh, but those, those are my only comments.
So in the United States, okay. Um, okay. Um, David, there was one uh, person who we couldn't get on. Is that individual able to connect in now?
Let me just check on that. One second, please. Um, they are on again. They don't have their hand up. Uh, if, uh, it, you know, if you're the person who spoke, but wanted to speak before and uh, and cut out, if you want to raise your hand again, I, I'll call it. They just disconnected again.
Okay.
So um, they're, they're gone. Sorry, John.
Okay, that's okay. So um, may I have a mo- if there's no further comment, may I have a motion that the um, Acton Board of Selectmen adopt the policy titled Acton Policy Against Racism dated November twelfth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Oh.
Okay, uh, is there a second, Dean? Uh, Joan moved. Okay, um, would um, uh, David, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Charter?
Aye.
And I say aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay, well, thank you. And um, I, that would conclude our business. We're meeting again um, on Monday night um, coming, which is the sixteenth. We have an executive session at six o'clock. Those materials will go out later today. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Joan, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, uh, David, if you please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye. Okay.